Okay, the first item of business that we have tonight is our public hearing. We have some items that was passed over to us from our planning commission. And so at this time, this is the time of the meeting that we will allow anyone that would like to speak either for or against these zoning changes. We do ask you, when we get to these different items, if you'll come up to our podium so we can get you where everyone can see you and also you'll be on camera and so we can also record this in our minutes. But once we go through each of these, we'll adjourn out of this portion of our meeting and then any action that needs to be taken on these will be done in the second half of our meeting in our regular business. So this is just a hearing only and action taken on these items will be done a little bit later into the meeting process. So item number one here, we have an application for rezone amendment. David Coker requests a rezon from A-1 agriculture to R-2 residential for property located at Zero Drew Lane, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax partial zero dash three one five dash zero one dash zero zero two. The first hearing, as always, is at the planning commission and that meeting was held on January the 17th, 2019. These meetings have been advertised in the local ordering of the messenger. Notices have been placed at the property locations. So all paperwork seems to be in order. Is anyone here that would like to speak either for or against item number one on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing number one, we'll move to item number two. Application for rezone amendment. John and Cheryl McCarthy request a rezon from R-2 residential to A-1 agriculture for property located at 424 Straight Gut Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax partial number zero dash three two six dash zero four zero eight. Again, the first hearing of this meeting was with the planning commission on January the 17th, 2019. Is anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, y'all are a quiet group tonight. All right, then we have item number three, we have an application for conditional use variance for home, how do y'all pronounce that?
Ecliptics.
Ecliptics, thank you. Inc. requests a conditional use variance for property located in 905 Lafette Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax partial zero dash two oh six dash two nine one. First hearing was at the planning commission on January the 17th, 2019. Is anyone here that'd like to speak on this property? If y'all will come up here to the podium and speak your name and your involvement or your position on this request.
I'm Mike Crane. I am actually the owner of the property. What we decided at the planning session meeting was to actually rezon it to R-2 and that's what was recommended from the planning commission instead of doing conditional use. So if you want to know information about the property, it was said during the meeting that that property really is residential. It's a house, two bedrooms, one bath, kitchen, it's a house, looks like a house, smells like a house. The only issue that was brought up was that there was commercial around it, but it was also noted that most of those properties people are living in already. And so it was voted for to just rezon it as an R-2 residential rather than keeping it commercial bottom line. I'm trying to sell it and I tried for over a year to sell it.
Actually since March of 16.
Yeah, I've been trying to sell it as commercial and it's just not a commercial property. There's no place to park, there's, even if I tore the place down, built another place, the lot itself is not conducive to be a commercial property. So it is a residential piece of property.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anybody have anything else either for or against, anything that you'd like to say in public about this property that we've had a, originally it was a variance request and as you heard, it's changed to go from a, from a commercial property to an R-2. Anything else on this? Okay, hearing number one, we'll adjourn our public hearing on these items at this time. Everyone has been allowed to speak. It is now 6:06 and we will open up into our regular scheduled meeting, Thursday, January 24th, 2019. There was agenda packets out front for everyone that'd like a copy and also the complete agenda packet, as always, is on our website. So you can go and Google search Walker County Commission or Walker County Government and you can find all the history of all of the meeting packets in their entirety is online. In this packet, the first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the meeting back on January the 10th, 2019. Any of those of you that have reviewed this, has anyone seen any corrections or issues with these minutes? Hearing number nine will sign these into the record. Okay, item number one, we've got something very exciting here tonight. We have a proclamation for Frank Richardson. All right, let me read this proclamation that we've got here. We have a presentation here in a moment. "By the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation Frank Richardson Day. Whereas Frank Richardson began service in Walker County as its citizens and member, excuse me, Walker County and its citizens as a member of the Walker County Planning Commission, January 1, 1973. And whereas Mr. Richardson has faithfully and conscientiously served Walker County and its citizens for 46 years, during which time the planning commission facilitated many projects which continue to have a positive impact upon Walker County. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exclamatory, exclamatory, if I say, exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community. And Mr. Richardson has worked for the betterment of the citizens of Walker County and the quality of its communities. And whereas Walker County has benefited greatly because of Mr. Richardson's devotion and genuine care for his fellow citizens by ensuring the appropriate planning and zoning standards were followed. And whereas Walker County desires to express its sincere appreciation for Mr. Richardson's service over the past 46 years and wishes Mr. Richardson much happiness as he begins a new chapter in his life. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February the 2nd, 2019, as Frank Richardson Day in Walker County and hereby urge all citizens and employees to enjoy and congratulate Mr. Richardson for his meri, meri service, loyalty and dedication rendered to the community and recognize the value contribution he's made to improve the lives of Walker County citizens. Signed and sealed the 24th day, 2019. Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County." So we have also here another copy in a folder, I'll sign this as well. And Miss Becky will test that. So Frank, come on up here. Let me come around over here. We'll stand right here in front so we can get this on camera here. We have a plaque here that says "An appreciation for 46 years of service, loyalty and commitment to the Walker County Planning Commission." This was also presented January 17th at the last meeting. So we have a plaque, we have a copy of the resolution that you can take and frame that. And so we very much appreciate your time, dedication and things have come a long ways in Walker County since you've been involved in the planning commission and we're very grateful for all that you've done and all your dedication and hard work on that board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's give him a hand. (applause) Stand right here, let's get a picture here real quick. Very good, thank you so much, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll get you the box for that before you go, check it out. Those are always the fun things that we get to do and I don't know if anybody in Walker County that has ever served that many years onto any type of public board, less or less of commission and a lot of times those meetings are not very easy. Sometimes there's people that are on both sides of the issue and everybody thinks they're right. And so there's some tough decisions that have to be made and I'm sure over 46 years you have seen it all.
I've seen it all.
Absolutely, please.
I was born and raised in Walker County and have lived here all of my life, raised my family here and know a lot of people in the county. I went to work for the county health department in 1967 and I retired from Walker County. I've got a son that's kindly following in my footsteps. He's an employee of Walker County Board of Education. So I love this county and I've lived here all of my life and I'm gonna die here.
Well, we appreciate your dedication and it's good to see multi-generations in our community and that's what makes Walker County great. Thank you again. Okay, we have a resolution, second item on our agenda, Resolution R-4-19, a resolution of Sole Commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member to Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. Whereas the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia must appoint three members of the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. And whereas Melanie Day served as a member of the Board of Directors until expiration of her term on December 31st, 2018. Whereas Robert Wardlaw currently serves as the Economic and Community Development Director of Walker County, Georgia and is qualified and willing to serve as a representative of Walker County upon the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Robert Wardlaw is hereby appointed to serve as a representative of Walker County on the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority for a term ending December 31st of 2020. And be it further resolved that Sole Commissioner expresses gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Walker County for Melanie Day's service upon the Board of Directors of the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority, so resolved and adopted the 24th day of January 2019. And so to my right here is Robert Wardlaw and he's done a fantastic job for Walker County. And Robert, we thank you for your willingness to take on this task and we know we've just added more to your plate.
It's all right, it's an honor to represent all of you. Thank you for trusting in me to represent you in these various fashions, it is truly an honor, thank you.
Test that from the record. And also in the packet I'd already signed because we mailed her a copy the other day in the mail, we have a letter going out to Melanie Day, dated January the 18th, 2019. Again, her term expired December 31st of 2018. It says, "On behalf of the citizens of Walker County, thank you for completing your term on the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority Board. Your service has been invaluable to the people of Walker County and has helped to make Walker County a better place to live, work and play. Thank you again for your willingness to take the time out of your busy schedule to serve as a volunteer, serve on this volunteer board. Sincerely, Shannon Whitfield, Walker County Sole Commissioner." So we've sent her that and we've included that in our record. Okay, the next item is a Resolution R-15-19, a resolution of Sole Commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member to the Alcohol Beverage Commission. Whereas Section 6-81 of Chapter 6 of the Walker County Code of Ordinance provides that the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia must appoint members of the Alcohol Beverage Commission. And whereas Dean Kelly is qualified and willing to serve as a member of the Alcohol Beverage Commission of Walker County. And whereas the Sole Commissioner of Walker County recognizes Mr. Kelly's qualifications and commitment to public service. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Dean Kelly is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the Alcohol Beverage Commission for the term ending on December 31st of 2021. And be it further resolved that the Sole Commissioner expresses gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Walker County for Mr. Kelly's willingness to serve upon the Alcohol Beverage Commission, so resolved and adopted this day, 24th of January, 2019. Mr. Kelly wasn't able to be here with us tonight, but again, we appreciate his willingness to serve in this capacity to represent the best interests of the citizens of Walker County. Okay, the next item we have is a memorandum of understanding between the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit. This is a multi-jurisdiction drug task force, local government participation for grant period of July 2018 through December 2018 and also January 2019 through December 2019. So there's two documents here, they're identical. This is just a standard business that's been in place for some time where the city of Lafette, city of Fort Outhor, Dade County, Walker County, Chautauqua County, work in collaboration to form the Northwest Georgia Joint Task Force to work to try to take a bite out of crime in these areas on drug trafficking and different things that's going on. And they've been very effective. And so these are documents basically that they need to show that all these communities are on board, making a financial commitment to this entity and also providing staff members. And also these documents then allows them to pursue grant opportunities and to be recognized by the state and other federal agencies that they are an existing entity that has been recognized by all these governing authorities. So we have two of these that we'll sign, they've got to think a little behind on their paperwork and they brought these to us just a couple of weeks ago or less. And then they'll distribute these and have all of the local governing authorities that participate sign these as well and then everyone can get back a complete signed original copy. Okay, we have item number five, we have a approval for purchase order number 2019-271 to Jenkins Chrysler Dodge Jeep for the purchase of two Dodge Chargers for Walker County Sheriff's Office. We had some discussion about this about two meetings back. Sheriff Wilson was here with us and did a good job of giving a summary of how we were taking and moving some funds around in his budget and also taking some budget changes where he's had received some income or some, he's had a couple of automobiles that had been wrecked. And so we took the insurance money, showed that as revenue coming into his budget so he could replace a couple of Dodge Chargers that had been in accidents and had been totaled out. And so we needed that revenue in order to be able to replace them. So this $44,052 is in this budget. They are being able to buy these locally and again, these are just taken to replace two vehicles that had been totaled out in accidents. So is there any questions about this purchase order? Hearing number nine will formally approve this. Just a little background on this too, some of you that have not been with us before, any capital purchases over $15,000, not only do we do a purchase order system now on anything over $200, but anything that's not the normal course of business or a capital purchase, we take over the $15,000 mark and we bring those to the public meeting to disclose to the citizens of Walker County of how their tax dollars are being invested and how they're gonna be utilized. And in most cases, the department head or the elected official will come and speak and answer any questions. But we went pretty much in depth on this one a couple of meetings back, but the purchase order had not been processed at that time, so this is kind of a follow-up to that. And so we didn't feel it was necessary for the sheriff to have to come and get back out tonight. But we want the citizens to know when there are large capital purchases being made and so you don't go down a road and say, "Is that a new fire truck?" Or "Where did that come from?" Or "They bought property or buildings or farms?" Or any of these type of things that has happened in past times. Everything now over $15,000 that's not the normal course of business comes to these meetings. So local, your local county government is held accountable and also that we go through the steps and process to verify that it's in the budget or either amendments are made to the budget to make this all balance and make sure we have an overall balanced county budget. Okay, now we're back to taking action on our applications. Item number six, application for rezon. David Coker requests a rezon from the A-1 agriculture to R-2 residential for property located at Drew Lane, Lafette, Georgia, tax partial zero dash three fifteen dash one dash zero zero two. The planning commission tabled this request back at their January 17th, 2019 meeting. Philip Cantrell is with us, he is the planning commission chairman. So Philip, you have anything additional to add to that or any background on why that was tabled?
Background would be, Mr. Coker had divided this property back in 1998, I believe, and he had a preliminary drawing from a surveyor, engineer, and these lots were on sewer, but at that time, they had drawn these lots at 12,000 square feet, in which we require 15,000 square feet for these lots, you know, in today's world. And he said that he had, it had been approved, but he didn't have any paperwork. So we wanted to see the approval under those circumstances before we would go ahead and sign off on it, so that's why we tabled it. And he's supposed to find that paperwork and bring it back to our meeting this coming month and then we can go forward. If it's been, if it has been taken care of back in 1998, then the board will have no other choice but to, you know, to approve it if it's already been approved, so.
Okay, very good. So we'll, also at this time, there was no one here to speak on this, we'll also table this and allow the property owner to work with the planning commission to see if they can come up with a documentation. So we'll just table it at this time. Okay, item number seven, application for rezon. John and Cheryl McCarthy request a rezon from R-2 residential to A-1 agriculture for property located at 424 Straight Gut Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, tax partial zero three two six dash zero four zero eight. The planning commission's recommendation approval as submitted and it's January 17th, 2019 meeting. Mr. Cantrell, you got anything additional to add to this?
I'll kind of tell you what went on. This folk, this gentleman and his wife is not, is thinking ahead into retirement. They want to have like a little mini farm there. They have enough property to do it. They're in a, they're in a residential zoning and so we zoned him back to agriculture so that he could have the ability to do what he wants to do. In the beginning, people thought he was gonna build a dog kennel there, so we did have some folks show up that was worried about the dog kennel, but that wasn't what he requested at all, so.
Okay, 'cause as well, if anyone wanted a dog kennel, as you well know, but just for our audience, there's a lot of restrictions and some pretty significant setbacks and things that have to be implemented, drawings and approval process in order to make something like that happen. So there should not be any risk of that happening without the proper approval process.
And that's a proper permit.
Yeah, proper permits, yes, thank you. And the planning commission voted unanimous to approve this and I'm gonna go with their recommendation and also approve this at this time. Okay, the application for conditional use. Hall McEclipt request a conditional use variance for the property located at 905 Lafette Road, partial zero dash two oh six dash two nine one. The planning commission recommended approval of the rezon from C-1 to R-2 instead of the conditional use variance at the January 17th, 2019 meeting. We heard Mr. Crane speak on that earlier, so you got anything to add to that?
They originally came to us wanting to ride the fence, be able to have the property held as a commercial or residential. The board wasn't, you know, willing to leave the property zoned either way and for this gentleman to sell it, you know, it needed to be one zoning for the realtors, you know, to be able to handle it. And from what we were told and for the properties there and everything, the board decided that it was the best for it to be a residential zone. It is a small lot with a house and it's really not conducive to, you know, commercial, you know, so.
All right, looking at the minutes also from the planning commission, 10 members voted in favor for the rezon, two voted against. There's no ones come tonight to speak in any opposition or had any further information to present, so I'm gonna go with the recommendation of the planning and also approve this one All right, the last official item on our agenda is we have some upcoming community forums that we're gonna do. We're real excited about these. We felt like that the month of February was probably the best time to do these while it's still cold and dark at 6 o'clock and before Little League ball gets started up and it starts warming up. We wanted to be able to try to capture as many people as we could to attend these meetings. We've worked to establish eight actual venues and so we want to just briefly cover those tonight. First one's coming up in less than two weeks, Monday, February the 4th, at the Cedar Grove Community Center, 5395 West Cove Road, which is out toward Mount Co. Farms area on the south end of our county. Then that next day, on Tuesday, February the 5th, at the Rossville Civic Center up at 400 McFarland Avenue. This is in the same building where the Rossville City Hall is. And then on Monday, February the 11th, at the Emery Valley Community Center on Georgia Highway 136, on the other side of Tyler's Ridge as you're heading over toward Whitfield and Gordon County over in the Emery Valley. Monday, February the 18th, at the Lafette Walker County Library. Some of, our local people don't even know where the local library is in Lafette, but if you go to the Lafette Courthouse, if you're facing it, turn right, second building on the left, we have a very nice library facility there. There's a good-sized meeting conference room and they've been gracious enough to allow us to use that facility. That was on Monday, February the 18th. And then the following night, on Tuesday, February the 19th, at Center Post Community Center down on Georgia 337, south of Lafette, which is formerly a school building that's been turned into a community center. There's a lot of events that are held there and so we're thankful they let us use that facility. Then Thursday, February the 21st, we're gonna go up to the mountain at Ferryland Elementary School up on Little Lake Road, we'll be there. And then the following Monday, on February the 25th, we'll be at the Mount Pleasant Community Center, which is on the south end of the mountain down on Georgia Highway 157, more so in the Rising Fawn Community. So that one's been recently added. So originally there was seven and then we were able to secure that facility and add an eighth one to be able to cover the Rising Fawn Community. And then the following night, the final one, will be Tuesday, February the 26th, at the Chickamauga Civic Center on Lee Clarkson Road. Again, if you know where the Gordon Lee High School is, if you look across the street, you've got the Chickamauga Library. And right behind the Chickamauga Library is the Chickamauga Civic Center and that will be our eighth meeting. All of these meetings start at 6 o'clock, we'll have a We'll have a short PowerPoint presentation where we're gonna give some highlights of some things going on in our county, some things that we're working on. We'll have several of our team members there. We have some invited guests that will be at some of these meetings. So we want to share ideas and talk about opportunities for our county. We're willing to have the conversation about the things maybe that are not going so well or things that we can improve on, that we can do better. And also talk about how we continue to springboard off the things that are going very well and look at opportunities, some new things that maybe we as a staff have not thought about. So we want participation, we want people to show up. And probably 75-plus percent of the meeting is gonna be us listening to you. And so we want to give everybody ample time to be able to come and talk and share ideas and help formulate and be involved in how we continue to move forward. We don't want to spend a lot of time looking back at the, at our issues and hurdles of the past as much as we want to talk about how we go forward, how we continue to move and how we make Walker County a better place as we go and kick off 2019 and as we go forward. Anything you want to add to that, Robert?
I just want to encourage everyone and everyone that's here and everyone that might be watching on the YouTube channel that Joe's doing and for our UCTV, please, please come out and share ideas and thoughts and be a part of assisting us. We represent you, you know, it's a team effort. And it takes an entire community to advance these projects and ideas and we sincerely and genuinely, not only welcome, but encourage you to please come out and join us and let's talk about things. We've got a lot of positive momentum for our county right now and you gotta take this opportunity and we've gotta move and advance these issues forward, so. Thank you for the chance to say that and look forward to seeing everyone at these meetings.
We're excited. This is gonna be a marathon of meeting because in mixed all of that, we've got other meetings that we're committed to throughout the month. So I think I'm gonna get a couple of nights at home through February, but it's gonna be exciting to get out and meet more people and try to energize everybody to help us move things forward. Okay, at this time, that officially ends our regular meeting of our agenda items, but as always, we have this time where we have open discussion. Anyone that would like to come to the podium and speak and address myself or the staff, anything that you want to talk about with Walker County, good, bad or indifferent. We do ask you to keep your comments focused on our local economy or our local county. Unfortunately, there's not anything I can do about the federal shutdown or any of those other issues or we'd have already pulled the trigger. But anything that you'd like to talk about, about your local community, we'd love to hear from you. We just ask that you be respectful of time and on the first round, we try to ask you to stick to about a five-minute timeline to respect others that are also, that may want to speak. So is anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Alright, going once. Anybody got anything? Well, it's a real quiet group tonight. Well, we're gonna allow you eight opportunities to come speak, so get your pad and papers, make your notes and come out to the community forum. So thank each of y'all for being here. Thank you for being willing to take part in your local government and get involved. And so as Robert indicated, it takes everybody to move a community forward. So thank you for being here, be safe and we'll be back here the second and fourth Thursday of every month. So we'd love to have you back. We've got a great venue here, got plenty of parking now, plenty of seating, so we welcome people to come to these meetings and take part. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, friends.